We'll call this Committee of the Whole Meeting for May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three
There he is.
to order. We'll read really slow. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, a current copy of the Act is available at this meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please take role?
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Freshhour.
Here.
Hemmer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schelling.
Here.
Council President Augustine Schulte, the role has been called.
Thank you. We have one item on our agenda this evening. It's a presentation on the Highway thirty-sixty-four study, and I believe we have some representatives in our audience here to talk with us about this tonight. So we'll let you gentlemen come forward.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Ingall. I live at fifty-four Park Circle Drive. I'm just here to introduce the people that know stuff. You, some of you are too young, some of you are as old as me. About twenty-five years ago, there was a lot of talk about Arnie's Bridge. And Arnie Stutman went around to the various entities and people pledged money. Then the thing just kind of died. And now about two, two years ago, it started again. It got some footing, probably because of the flood. But in any case, we're at the point, like a lot of things, I know I won't ever drive over this if it happens. I'm not sure I'll drive on the four lane to Fremont. I'm not even sure I'll drive on the viaduct to ADM, the way things are going. But what I do know is any project like that, and you guys had a viaduct, you know, it has to start sometime. It may take ten, twenty, thirty years, but if it never starts, it'll never get finished. So Arnie's here. Mr. Grenon's here. He's half of the consulting team that we've hired, and you guys have agreed to pay part of their fee. So I, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Grenon, and then he may also introduce Mark Manelli, who is the county highway superintendent. All right?
All right. Dennis. Thank you. My name is Dennis Grenon. I live at eighteen-seventy-seven West Calley, Colombo, here in Columbus. As Mr. Ingall indicated, last July, the county hired Mr. Hirschbrenner and myself to do a benefit cost study on this particular project. And with all the history involved, that was really kind of a study that was needed to see if this is worth pursuing or not, and put those figures together. Mr. Hirschbrenner would be here tonight, but good news is his granddaughter is playing in the state soccer finals for Lincoln Southwest as a freshman, and which we obviously didn't know when we got on the schedule for this meeting. So I did write him an excuse slip this morning at our coffee group that he could go attend that, which I thought absolutely got to do that. I'm going to kind of split things up here a bit as we go through the report, which I hope you've had a chance to at least look through it and kind of get an idea of what, what we put together. And I'll be referring to some of the information that's in front of you there as the handouts are, as we go through. But what I'll kind of focus on is the benefit side of this, what we put together and where we got that information and so forth. And then I would like to turn it over to Mr. Manelli, who is the engineer for Platte County, who we worked with over the months and worked with Rick also to look at this. And, and, you know, we, we really wanted it to be a credible report when we were finished. We know there's some things that you've got to kind of look forward to and make your best judgment on. There's, it's not exact by any means, but anyway, to, to use our best judgment and make it a credible report when we're done. And we, we think we've done that. When we, again, I want to focus a little bit here on the benefit side. As, as we looked at what we need to put together, we did visit with the Nebraska Department of Transportation to see typically what they want in a benefit cost study, because that's what they use to even look at projects, to, to get them started, to get into somewhere into the planning mode and so forth. So we had, we had several examples, and we used those. So we kind of knew from traffic and safety and some of the things I'll talk about, that's, that's typically what they want, want in a report. So we wanted to make sure we covered that as much as we could. Now, we don't, we are not experts in every areas, so some of those areas we didn't cover, but the ones we did, we'll talk about here. So looking at the benefits, and, and let me back up just a minute before we start, because the map in front of you, just to make sure everybody's kind of looking at where this road would possibly go and where the new bridge would go. As you can see, Columbus is that kind of white area in that middle left-hand section, and then if you follow it down just under the orange box, that's Highway thirty. And then if you come south on that first red line, and then keep going green and purple and so forth, that's really the corridor that I think, as we looked at it, does make sense to put a new bridge in across the Platte River. It's about seven miles of road from Highway thirty down connecting to Highway sixty-four. Comes out about a mile west of Bellwood, and there is a road there, and of course, that's Butler County as you cross the river. And Mr. Manelli will talk about the different phases and then where the bridge goes and so forth, and how those roads can be built to connect all of that together. So it, as you look at it though, from a high level, it, it is a regional project. I mean, it's, it's not just one county or one county, another county or one city of Columbus and so forth. It does turn out to connect that whole region south and, and east of here and provide a new bridge across the, the river. As Jerry indicated, we did kind of really started talking about this again after the twenty-nineteen flood and, and the fact that we really couldn't go anywhere in Columbus for about three days, either to the south or the east or to the north. But certainly as we look to the south and our current bridge situation as you cross the Loop River, getting out of Columbus is an issue, and, and not, not just from a twenty-nineteen flood, but as we've experienced from ice jams and so forth across the Loop. So the need for another bridge, I think intuitively, as we talk to folks, they go, yeah, I think it's really needed. So, uh, so the study is to try and put some numbers together that says it's not just intuitive, but there are enough benefits that we ought to keep pursuing this. So as we, as our group worked, we used several sources for information. Certainly, one of them was a survey we did of, of industries out, out around Columbus. We sent, we worked with NPPD and their Economic Development Department through Loop Public Power, and those folks have done these kinds of studies across Nebraska for a lot of different reasons, not just roads, but sometimes communities need industrial parks developed and so forth. And so take a look at what the potential would be. So working with NPPD's Economic Development Group, we first put a survey of eight questions together, sent it out to forty-four industries, and we asked them, were, were you impacted by the flood, and if you were, how? And if you would, give us a dollar amount. And we got twenty responses, by the way, out of forty-four requests, which is pretty good for most surveys. You get over fifty percent. That's pretty good. We also asked them, though, how many employees they had, how many work from outside of Columbus? And that response is, it was, it was, I don't know, kind of surprising to me. About a third of the employees that work in at least the twenty industries that responded come from outside of Columbus. And that was verified as we looked at more data from NPPD. Big source of data that we used was from the twenty-nineteen census, and they have data, and it's all in your report, it's back in the appendix, that shows where people live and where they work. And, and certainly the data that we looked at, particularly for Columbus and Platte County, showed a lot of folks that live in Columbus that work outside of Columbus and vice versa. A lot of folks that live in David City, Butler County, other areas, work here in Columbus. So as we looked at that data and asked ourselves, now which, which of those folks would likely use this corridor to come and go from work? Obviously, we're not going to count people that work in Norfolk. They're not going to use this corridor. So, so we looked at Platte County, we looked at Columbus, we looked at Polk, we looked at Colfax, and quite honestly, I didn't use any of the data from Colfax. There may be some usage of this corridor for folks getting to and from work, but we said, just to be conservative, we're not going to use that. Butler, there's a, there are quite a number of folks that would use this corridor coming and going. So, uh, the other source of data that we also looked at was the I-Terris study that was done by the earlier committee to get a traffic count, what, what would probably be the traffic count here. So we looked at that, used it certainly as a comparable study, but also used data out of it for traffic time, travel time, mileage savings and so forth. So that was also a good source of, of information. So taking all that data, if you would, and kind of crunching it over the months, again, working really close with the NPPD folks, we came up with savings around traffic that included mileage and time, and then also from other traffic studies, safety, what that would be worth and so forth. The other area that the NPPD folks helped us a lot is the economic development aspect. When you build a new road, particularly in the area that we're looking at here, there's usually development that goes on. And it's not just usually, it's probably. And I think our Lost Creek Parkway is a great example of what's been built out there, and so that was one of the pieces of data that we used, looking at the last ten years, what assets have been built along that parkway, what the dollar amounts are on the, on the taxes and so forth, and what's that worth as far as economic development. So there are two pieces to the economic development part, and one's the assets that are built as well as the jobs that are created. And again, we got that data from NPPD. So looking back at the traffic portions of this, again, looked, looked at the traffic counts from the data, and our, our traffic counts were a little bit higher than what the I-Terris study showed. Not a lot. We showed about forty-three-hundred vehicles a day. The I-Terris was about twenty-three-sixty. And of those, about fourteen percent, they figured would be trucks. So using that same ratio, we used, a, a number of autos was about nineteen-hundred to three-thousand a day, and trucks were about two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-twenty-six a day. Now, that's, I think, on the conservative side, again, going back to the survey of the industries, or of those twenty, there's like eleven-hundred trucks a day coming and going from those twenty industries out there. So our approach on this whole study, again, to make sure it was credible, we, we said we're going to be on the low side. So the numbers that we're going to come up with, we're going to, we're not going to use a number, we're going to use a range of numbers. We'll take the number we come up with, but we're going to back off of it and say it's going to be somewhere between fifty percent and eighty percent of that number. So half to eighty percent. So, you know, I, I feel confident, very confident about the numbers that we come up with, are very conservative, and I think they're really higher than what we looked at, but that's okay. If, if it looks attractive using a very conservative approach, it ought to be that much more attractive on, on using the whole numbers. So, uh, using those traffic counts, if you look at the second page of your handout, it's really the summary of the findings that we came up with. So first category was just the mileage savings, again, looking at what people, the miles that would be saved depending on where they're coming from and traveling on this route, both for workers and truckers. And then we applied the mileage rate of fifty-eight cents a mile for workers and two dollars and seventy-five cents for trucks. And so that's the number you see there, two-point-one-nine million to three-point-five-one for workers, and then one-point-four-four to two-point-three million for, for trucks. Again, that's based on just the mileage they save by not driving up and around and back or, and more of a direct route. And again, that was information that was used from I-Terris as, as far as the miles saved. Same thing on the travel time savings, the next category down, the numbers, and there I just used twenty bucks an hour for workers and fifty dollars an hour for truckers. And that's the point-seven-nine to one-point-two-six and point-four-three to point-six-eight million. Traffic safety was taken from other studies done by NDOT where they attach a dollar figure to traffic accidents and fatalities, used a very comparable project that they'd done, they had done before, is about the same length and so forth, and came up with that number of one-point-one to one-point-seven million per year, just in safety savings. Flood impact, that number was taken from the survey information that the industries gave us. Some of us gave, gave, gave us dollar figures for what the impact was, and the impact wasn't damage to their facilities, it was interruption to their operations. Either people could not get to work, or they couldn't get materials in or out. So there was, there was some real impact there. It's really not a huge amount, comparable speaking, one-point-seven to two-point-five million per year. And what I did was just take those and, and looked out over twenty years, which, by the way, all these numbers are in today's dollars. You know, we're not trying to roll them forward or anything. And as we looked at the life of the project, I tried to come up with a total amount, we used twenty years. So that, that gets down to the total for just using, looking at the traffic and the flood aspects, you know, seven-point-six-five to eleven-point-nine-five million per year, and over twenty years, that's a hundred-and-fifty-three to two-hundred-and-thirty-nine million. Okay? That's just those categories above. Then as we move on down, the economic development part of it, again, using the NPPD data on how many jobs would be created with this type of a project, what are a hundred jobs worth in non-urban Nebraska? And looking at the assets that would be developed, we narrowed it down, we said, you know, location of this corridor, most likely what will be built along most of it would likely be manufacturing in nature, although Butler County is looking at more, maybe more housing or quite a bit of housing from discussions we've had with them. But we just, again, to be conservative, we said we're just going to use manufacturing dollars that would be created, both jobs and assets. And that's that number there, the sixty-six to two-hundred-and-four million per year in jobs. It's a big number. Assets, eighteen-point-seven to twenty-point-nine million per year, again, over twenty years. So the economic development numbers get big. As you go on down, you look twenty-year benefits, and you're talking one-point-seven to four-point-six billion over twenty years, okay? Due to jobs and assets being built on this. So total benefits, adding the two above from traffic and, and economic development, over twenty years, you're looking at one-point-eight to four-point-nine-one billion dollars potentially. Again, that's using the fifty to eighty percent range, trying to be conservative, and particularly after you start doing some of this math and running it out, and over twenty years, you go, hmm, it gets big pretty fast, potentially. But again, as you look at what's happened along Lost Creek Parkway, there's over three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars' worth of assets developed along that parkway in the last ten years. Probably that'd be that much more in the next ten years. So it does happen, and the other, it's not necessarily comparable, but you look at West Dodge and what's developed after that's, uh, road has been built over the last twenty years, it's unbelievable. So it does, it does take place. And NPPD had several other projects that we, they're back in the appendix, if you want to look at those, that you can compare to. So, uh, so that's kind of, you know, that's what we put together to try and quantify the potential benefits. Now, we want to come up with a ratio, because that's what the state needs, which is really benefits divided by cost. So the cost portion, I'm going to ask Mr. Manelli to come up and talk about that, because he really, him and his company put together the engineering, high-level conceptual engineering and the cost estimates to come up with about fifty-seven million dollars. So you compare the cost, fifty-seven, with these potential benefits, and that's what we'll talk about here in a minute. So I'll stop there if there's any questions I could address at this point, or we can keep moving and...
Did we ever find out why the other twenty-some manufacturers didn't respond? Just curious.
I, I really can't tell you, other than we made two to three calls, and some just didn't want to respond or didn't have time, or I'm not sure. On the other hand, we felt pretty good to get twenty responses. At first, it was only like fifteen. So after a couple, three calls, we bumped it up five more. So, yeah. Okay, Mark, would you like to?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, women. My name's Mark Manelli. I'm a consulting engineer. We got offices in Lincoln and in Norfolk. We do a lot of work for counties in the state of Nebraska and smaller municipalities. I've been the engineer for Colfax County for twenty-five to thirty years, and I remember when Arnie came asking for money the first time. So that's how long I've been around this project and the counties. I've also started my career for the DOT, then the Department of Roads in Columbus in the early eighties, so I'm very familiar with the Columbus area, and then moved to Norfolk, and then the director at the time decided to move me all over the state, of which time I started to be a consultant, because at least I could be home, at least I thought I could. So when Arnie started to get this momentum going again, the, the county board through the Road and Bridge Committee wanted a seat at the table, so they instructed me to work with, with the two Denises to, to keep them in check, I guess, but also to look at the, the project as a whole. My firm has done some projects like this in the past. The last big one we did was the, we call it Northeast Industrial Highway, which is the highway that goes north of Norfolk past the steel manufacturers, New Core Steel, Dreyfus, Norfolk Iron and Metal, from Highway sixty-five, or eighty-one over to Highway thirty-five. There was a lot of discussions, probably twenty-five years' worth, before the city, the two counties, and the industry got together and decided they had to just do this job. It started out as a federally job, and we piecemealed it, which is kind of like the map I have, which I want to go through there. And what we decided to do back then is keep the federally out of it so that we could move it faster, we could permit it faster, and we could get it done at a cheaper cost by keeping the federally monies out of it and the state money out of it. So if you ever get a chance to drive the Northeast Industrial Highway, that was all done with local funds, and it was done in, in seven different pieces. We're doing the same thing for the city of Ashland right now, for a truck bypass, all the gravel that comes out north of Ashland comes through Ashland. They wanted to run around the city to, to eliminate that impact to their downtown. And actually, the city of Norfolk is looking, expanding that industrial highway to the, to the northwest corridor and down south. So other communities are looking at this. The approach that I took, and if you look at the map, I broke it down into several phases. And the reason for the phases are these pieces are going to happen whether this bridge happens or not. So the idea is, is that you find the reasonable termini for each project that has to be done to move traffic safely and to encourage development on the project, whether we, we, we grab the brass ring for the north-south corridor or not. So Phase One is Eighth Street, which the comment says whether that Twenty-Ninth Street viaduct, and that appears to be going to letting this, this year, so it should be under construction this fall, at least, that's the last word we got from the DOT. When the viaduct gets completed, the intent was to rebuild Eighth Street over to the county line, and then north with concrete pavement, twenty-four-foot wide, earth shoulders, to encourage truck traffic, to have another opportunity to get in and out of that, that area and spread the traffic movement around. The county, I, I don't speak for the county board, although there are county board people here, so this has been on our plan for a long time, and, and the county has discussed and, and considered this commitment for a long time. The next phase would be the three-mile pavement in our neighbors to the south. We did about a mile and a quarter from eighty-one. You can see the, the yellow phase, which is a potential phase, I call it. And we paved that several years ago. The intent of that county board was is to pave over to the Ark Corridor and then south to Bellwood, that river-bottom road was to be, to be improved. So we got the first phase of that already built. So the intent would be that Butler County would build their three miles, which would also be a twenty-four-foot wide with eight-foot earth shoulders to the, to the lake community south of where the river crossing would be, and to where the potential pavement to the east-west corridor would happen sometime in the future. Phase Three would be the grading from Eighth Street south to get elevated over the Lost Creek Corridor and flood areas, including the overflow structures. By the time we start building that phase, we got to have a pretty good commitment on the bridge, because that, that would basically be a road to nowhere if we didn't have a plan for it. So, um, which brings us to the fourth structure or phase of the, of the, of the project, which would be the, the bridge over the, the Platte River. I'm showing several overflow structures and a three-thousand-foot bridge there, and I, we've done some preliminary hydraulics. What we've done there is we've gone to the railroad bridge and how it performed in nineteen, and how the water expanded through that area, and we've spanned the entire confluence of the Platte River, how it came through and expanded through the river. Do I think it's going to be three thousand feet? No, I think it'll actually be shorter, but by, by starting at this level, I think we can span the entire active flood plain in that area. And the other flood plain north of there, the Lost Creek area, is pretty much still water, doesn't move as much as, as that large amount of conveyance through the bridge. So what we did is, is we took that, and then we looked at the, what we call potential jobs. One we talked about is the Butler County project, which would be separate to this, and the other is, is the south of Richland potential job. Colfax County's a little lukewarm right now, because this is a big bite for them, for a small community. That I've always looked at. I think that's high in ground, high ground over there. We've got some development happening off the highway right now. I think if that was hard to surface, this is my opinion, as their engineer, I think you'd start to see development, and I think you'd see Richland develop into more of a bed-and-breakfast community than what it's been. Co-op has been spending money there. That would open up quite a bit of development area. area. So there's no plans at this point to do that work. That's, those are just legs of this, uh, work that we would look at doing. So I mentioned the federally laid and where we go from here. So there's a lot of federal funds that are floating around or grant money that's available, supposedly, and we've applied for a lot of grant money for other communities and we've gotten some, mostly planning grants, which may be the next step. The environmental section, uh, or the, the environmental process has to be, uh, done whether or not we have federal funds or not. It's how far the tentacles go in is based on what you build with. So if we go federally laid or if this project decides to go federally laid, it's going to be, uh, massive in scope and we got to follow their rules. If we go in there and do the environment, environmental work, typically federally laid jobs, uh, on heavy highway-type projects typically run as much as fifty percent less than if you have a federally laid job. But that still leaves us with a pretty big bite of the apple. So we go back to the reasonable termini. So you take parts of the roads that when the federal grant people look at it and say, well, you just took out parts of the job so you wouldn't have to deal with our rules, these are all reasonable terminis. Uh, Segment One, Segment Two can be done whether this bridge gets built or not. So we would justify that work without federally laid and even part of Section Three we could do and consider that reasonable termini because it opens up development land in the south. The, the bridge itself would be the one that I would most likely be searching for, some federal assistance, whether it be through the old tiger grants or some of the, uh, money that's available out there that we would look at. The next phase would be a more detailed planning study, which would include the environmental work. That, those planning grants are available and they're, uh, they're accessible and, and I would suggest to everybody that that would probably be our next phase, mainly because of the amount of effort that's already been done with the cost-benefit analysis, is a huge portion of that application for that, that grant. That doesn't mean that we have to build the job with federally laid, it just helps us get all the pieces of the pie brought together and under that caveat. So what I've done is, is I've gone and it's in your packet of how we broke out the prices, um, those are a blend of federally laid projects using the, uh, DOT's average unit prices and what we expect to pay as county projects on the higher end. So if we actually went Phase One, for instance, what we have in there, if that was strictly county-only, the prices would be quite a bit less than what we're showing in there, but those are the average unit prices that the DOT would have on their projects right now. So if there's any questions about how we came up with this or pricing, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions.
What, what do you suppose just that three-thousand-dollar bridge will cost? Just the bridge?
So we just finished a, a bridge up, um, by Beamer over the Elkhorn River and we're running at about ten thousand dollars a linear foot for a bridge of that width. So you're at about, you're in the upper twenties or thirty million dollars just for the bridge?
For the bridge.
And like I said, that, that's an estimate for the, the, the length of the, the structure is just to cover the actual moving water and I think we could, through the hydraulic analyses, tighten that down, but to take a broad brush, that's, that's what we're looking at. So you're probably about thirty million dollars.
Thank you.
So Phase One through Phase Three would be around twenty-seven million? Is that what you're saying?
Right. And if you look closely, there's some overflow bridges on Phase Three and there's actually a small bridge with Phase Four in there, so there's some other bridge work that has to be done in there. The traffic numbers are high enough that the bridges would be forty-foot wide, that's one of the things that's getting us, is they're pretty wide and we build them. So this, this road's going to look like a highway.
The, uh, the cost that you gave us, that twenty to thirty million, now that's, that is the dollar amount that you're expecting to be divided between the four counties or is this just our portion of it, of this county? Or did I miss something?
Well, no, that's a very good question. So the discussion has been, and it's the concern of the smaller communities, Colfax County, but, uh, Butler County is, is how would we divide this out? So I start with, if it, if this gets built, let's talk about maintenance and, and longevity and how we're going to take care of that. So the way it stands right now, the counties that would, in which they fall would be responsible for the maintenance of, of snow removal, uh, mowing, crack sealing, crack repair, eventual long-term pavement replacement. As far as the construction goes, there's no way that we're going to be able to pull that kind of money together and expect Colfax County to pay half of their share. That, that would take them decades upon decades to come up with that kind of money. They just don't have the evaluation to do that. So we're going to have to come in with some innovative financing or some grant possibility, including industry. We would expect to go to industry and, and those that are going to benefit the most from here, we would want to visit with industry and see what we can do. New Core Steel donated all the fill for the project on that industrial highway, donated all the right-of-way, uh, and actually donated quite a bit of rebar for the project. So that type of cooperation is what we would start asking for. Takes a long time to develop that, which I'm sure you're very well aware of, but that's the only way this is going to get done.
Is, is Colfax County even seriously thinking? I mean, at this point, they're not engaged in, I mean, even the maintenance of a road that's split between, it's the county line road, so...
Right.
They're going to have input into it, are they able to even do that? Let alone maybe future development out to Richland off of this spur. I, I mean, is that really realistic if they're not even asking, they're not even coming into the plate, to the table yet?
So the commissioners that we have now, we, we, there's three commissioners over there, um, they're lukewarm at best on this. The previous board was very excited about this. So, uh, the, the, the board members that we have right now are very concerned about what their share would be. So there would have to be agreements like any other shared road of, of how that would happen. Once it's built, at least for the first twenty-five years or thirty years, maintenance is going to be snow removal and crack sealing. But eventually, like Highway Thirty here, we're going to have, we're going to have some major expenses. So those are, those are hurdles that we got to get over.
I guess another question is just, and, and it's, it's a guess, so one of the pitches of this is that we have another flood, we've got another outlet, so I guess two, my two parts of that question would be, when do we have another five-hundred-year flood? And then if we did, what says this bridge isn't going to be closed like maybe other bridges have been during the high-water times? Doesn't have to wash away. State can close that bridge when it's got ice jams all around it, all over it. So again, you know, just the question of how realistic is that sales pitch? Because it's a big one to put into this.
Yeah, and I agree. So i- it's a design consideration that you have to have, uh, I've been doing this for thirty-five years and I can't tell you how many hundred-year floods that I've dealt with just along Shell Creek alone. So I, I, Mr. Mayor, I hear you and, uh, the, you can design your way out of a lot of problems, but those catastrophic occurrences like we had in nineteen are very difficult. You can try to anticipate them, especially in this sandy soil, but we saw a lot of big bridges float away up north on sandy bridges too that were supposed to be designed for five-hundred-year events.
Do you have any other questions from council members?
I guess, I mean, educate me, the, the ARPA funding has been used by all counties or is earmarked in all counties?
Most of the ARPA funds have been, um...
Used or earmarked?
Gobbled up. I know, I, Platte County, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but they've, they had a committee together and I think they've allocated most of theirs. Of course, Colfax County didn't get near the, the funds that Platte County got, but they, they had to replace some infrastructure that they were...
Lost in the park.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Can I speak for a moment?
Absolutely.
Uh, I am very supportive of the project. Uh, I believe that we need to have some additional southern bypass parkway throughway around Columbus. In addition, I believe we need to have a western bypass parkway around Columbus. I think we were very farsighted in building the parkway as it exists today. I think the development we're seeing along that parkway is going to be, is, is absolutely going to bloom. I believe that the development, uh, adjacent to a proposal that we have here will be additionally fantastic, uh, when and if the western bypass parkway throughway comes, I think the development will be there also. I think we need to be farsighted and, in looking at these projects, I think they need to be built and we will, in the future, be better off for them. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments, questions? There is no motion for this, this is just a present...
One more speaker.
I am so sorry, please come up, Mr. ...
Never forget Senator Stute.
We can never forget. My apologies, please.
Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak on this project. I've worked on this project for many, many years and I had, you know, a lot of commitments, you know, people were going to help pay and stuff like that, but what happened was the Department of Roads were committed to so many dollars if I came up with X amount of dollars. It was like seventy-five thousand and then the state would, federal would come up with a, a couple hundred thousand dollars. But what had happened during that time was the fact that a different person got elected president and then it changed. I mean, the one that was working with me left, he went back to Omaha and, uh, and then I kind of had to start all over because I've, I've just had, uh, you know, I had counties very supportive of it and communities like, uh, Bellwood, uh, Columbus, uh, Schuyler was very short on how much they wanted to commit, but, but they were going to participate with it, so, and I just feel that this road, you know, there's nothing that you can cross coming from your home in Butler County, David City, and you got to drive to Highway sixty-four and go either way, either, you know, get to eighty-one or get by Schuyler. And since we've got so much industry, and this has been proven by the fact that, uh, the parkway is, is, well, amazing to me, you know, that it got going that much. So I think, I think, uh, you know, looking to the future, where are we going to get our workforce? I think it has to come from Lincoln and in that direction will have to come to work here in Columbus. There's nobody left out at Wallback. There, there's just nobody out there except a couple guys. And it, it, it just seems to me like, looking into the future, because I have seen, I used to haul hugs to Omaha about every week and with a eighteen hugs with a ten-foot truck box and, uh, Western Electric was way out from where Omaha is. And now you can't even find Western Electric, it is all covered up. And that's going to happen. David City, they're putting in several different businesses right up, right on the flat and there's going to be a lot of people. And I think, I think we got to focus on where are we going to get the people to work here? And they're going to have to cross the road. It's not the fact that we're, ever going to get a flood, it's just when we get a flood and it will come again. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. I'm just very supportive of it. I've got family members live in David City, you got to drive to Highway sixty-four and then you come here and then you got to drive back over to the workplace by Dicky Doodles. Otherwise, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
So again, thank you very much for your time tonight. We'll just wrap this up. Uh, we, we did go ahead and calculate the, uh, benefit-to-cost ratios and, and, uh, you know, just looking at the traffic aspects of it, you know, it was about two-point-six-eight to four-point-one-nine. Then when you include the economic development, it's, it's like a factor of ten, so, uh, which the NDOT does allow in their new projects now. They didn't used to factor in economic development, but they do now. They understand roads bring business and that's way, particularly rural Nebraska grows, so, um, what we would ask here tonight is, uh, we, uh, we did get a resolution of support for, of course, from, uh, Platte County and, uh, and we would ask the same here from the city so that we can go forward, uh, and have discussions with the other counties, Butler, Colfax and Polk, and NDOT. Particularly with NDOT, we need to present this as a regional project with support, uh, from, from, particularly from Columbus and Platte County. The other counties, I think, I think we'll get it, uh, we'll make the same kind of presentation, but we do need, uh, support from Columbus, so. That, I thank you again for your time, unless there's any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation this evening. Council meeting will be starting in twelve minutes.